Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
All right. October the 28th. It's about 10 minutes after nine. Had a little hiccup with the IT, but guess what? We got the IT gurus here today with us, and so we got straightened out. Regular meeting, Commissioners Court, Liberty County, Texas. Let the record show that all Commissioners are present today, so we do have a quorum, and we'll call this meeting into order. Our state representatives here. Janice, hold please, if you would. Can you lead us in the pledges? And Angela Mazzelli is going to lead us in our invitations board.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance, Sydney, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
God, you said in Isaiah, "For unto as a child is born, to us a son is given, and the government shall be upon his shoulder, and he shall be named wonderful counselor." Be a counselor to our elected officials today as they make decisions that affect the taxpayers in Liberty County and the citizens of Liberty County. Thank you, Lord, that it also says, "You're a mighty God. You're the everlasting Father. You're the Prince of peace." May we be peaceful in these decisions and agree to disagree peacefully if it's needed and guide us in the way that you want this county to go. We trust in you, Lord, and we thank you for your mercy and grace. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Angela.
Thank you, ma'am.
First item up. Didn't know if y'all knew this or not, but today is National First Responders Day. Sheriff, okay. So Chief Knox, I see you back there. Anybody else? Yeah, thank y'all. Of course, we got a bunch of first responders here. Don Nealon, he might be retired, but I guarantee he'd still be the first out there responding. Yep, that's right. Good to see you, Don. So if you see a first responder today, please shake hands or give him a hug or a wave, okay? All righty. Next item up is notices and proclamations. Dee Dee, I don't think we had any this morning. Okay? And next item up is public comment. I don't believe anyone has seen anything.
Can I make a comment?
I hope it's about elections.
Yeah.
Okay.
We got the rest of this week to vote till Halloween. November 4th is the election day. So far, only a little more than 2,000 people have voted. It's extremely poor turnout. We really need to get the vote out, so encourage everyone you know to go vote.
And what else being included in this?
It's the constitutional amendments. There's 17 of them. If you want information, go to our election webpage. There's information on there and links to Secretary of State information as well. And it's worth looking at them before you go. They're a little confusing, but there is information to help you sort them out. There is also a local option election, which means a choice to sell beer and alcohol in the Tarkinti area in JP5.
Next item up is declare conflicts of interest. Does anyone have any reason to declare any conflicts on the agenda today? Moving right along, go to consent agenda. There's several items on there, and of course, we can always either treat them as one and vote accordingly, or we can pull these off and have discussion about it. Everybody had a chance to look at them?
Yep.
Yeah, on the item six, payroll changes. Telecommunication certification pay and the master jailer's license certification pay. Has Commissioners Court ever approved these payments?
We had one certificate paid for the jail. I think it was back in 2000 or 2001. I think it was somebody that Commissioners Court approved for that one person. I think it went from the Sheriff's Department to the jail. And they had a certificate paid from there. But I think it was a carryover, but.
They were still commissioned officers, though.
Yeah, but, I mean.
But we've never approved a master jailer's license just?
No, I don't. I mean, the Sheriff's Department, I only remember it being passed like it was for the first say budgeted in the budget or voted on by Commissioners Court.
How about the telecommunication certification pay? We have an advance on here and an intermediate.
Well, that was, if we did have it, I think that's just from the Sheriff's Department anyway. I mean, oh, you're talking about number one?
Yes.
Angela, do you know if we have that budgeted? Is that a budgeted item?
Or?
The dispatchers, they have.
The dispatchers have it? And the sheriffs have it? Those are the only people that I am aware of that have it.
I mean, as far as the master, I mean, that's something, certainly something Commissioners Court could do, you know, but I'm just saying, as of right now, I don't. It's never been set in policy.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Do we have a add-on?
Yeah, I had one from Kim's office. Kim, do you want to address that? It was a $250 advance fund we paid for Jason Hendricks. That's what I received.
Right, it is his certificate pay. He works for the district attorney as an investigator. So $250 per month for advance certificate pay.
Bruce, you want to clarify that motion?
Yes. Make a motion to approve consent agenda except and the additional added except for six, one, two, three, and five. That's the jail approved master jailer's license certification for Heather. General certification for Tiff and Tammy for the jail. And the fire marshal, the intermediate telecommunication certification pay.
Tell me which ones again? One, two?
One, two, three, and five.
You wanted to exclude those?
Yes, exclude those. Y'all have to excuse me, I don't have a problem seeing this morning.
And including me in that.
Commissioner, just to be sure, my one is the dispatcher.
Correct, yes, I'm approving. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
So Christina Alvarez.
And we're doing the fire marshal master certification.
For George Jones.
George Jones, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Everybody good on the motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Thought you had that one. All right, you got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Here, none call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. We're the exceptions. Motion, Bruce. David. Down to the regular agenda. First item up is from me. It's an information item, report from the Liberty County Sheriff on the continuing repairs of the Liberty County Jail. Sheriff, what you got today?
Yes, sir. I'm not going to sing. Yes, sir. An update on the fire restoration on the far west end hall. Cotton has focused all that efforts there to get that done. The room painting is almost complete. The ceiling lights have been replaced. The floor has been ground and has been prepared for final finishing. The expanded metal installation is on hold right now until we get the HVAC and the intercom systems installed and approved, the quotes approved, and then the installation. And we have no date on when that's going to start yet. Bids are supposed to be in on the HVAC system this evening, by this evening, and then decision be made by the committee tomorrow or the project manager recommendation. The HVAC in the west hall, like I said, project managers getting the quotes, put it together, make sure everything's right. Our door locks, send a pick, contain it a two-day dry fit to make sure that all the door plates, covers would properly fit, and they are. They're going to be back October 27th. They said it'd take about eight to 12 days to get all those installed. The lock manufacturer will have us 14 more locks in early December. We'll get those done. The remaining locks will be in January, and then will be put on. The intercoms are on hold until the 27th. The fire hoses, we're still waiting for the correct fire hoses to get back. The wrong ones were delivered, and they'll have those here. As soon as they get in, we'll get them installed. Our general maintenance, they're still replacing lights, fixing plumbing, regular inspections, the backup generator, the chiller, the water pumps, the boilers, and they keep helping out with the contractors that are there too, the maintenance people.
Do you have a good idea on when you may be complete with this project?
Commissioner, I have a lot of good ideas that seem to be going down the creek here lately. But to answer your question, I'm hoping that if we get the stuff in and approved tomorrow, that the west end should be complete by the end of the year, hopefully. Then they'll start on the east end, but hopefully my projections are still the middle of December. If we, it depends on how fast they can get the HVAC system in.
Okay. All right, so luckily, I don't have a lot of knowledge of your jail, but, so the west end, so then you're going to ship prisoners to that end and then?
Correct. Four doors, and we'll put prisoners in on that end.
And then you'll start working the east end?
Correct, yes, sir.
Okay, so are we going to, are we going to go through the same HVAC, HVAC, door locks, all the same issues?
Hopefully that is done by tomorrow. Actually, HVAC, it's my understanding that the folks are going to include the whole facility and break it out for just the west end.
Okay.
So we can get that done. But the quotes that we're getting in, it's my understanding, Gerald, it'll be for the whole facility, correct? Yes.
Okay, but still no end date for the, you know, the weather forecasters on hurricanes, they used to give a best case, a worst case, and the most likely case. Do you have anything that would resemble that to tell us when we're going to land this thing?
Well, I'm hoping that the west end will be done by December. If we get the quotes in and they can do it, the contractors that I've met, they said that they could get it done within 30 days or so, they can do it because they have two teams a day and a night shift. They're doing it in priority, they know how fast we need it. As far as an exact date, I'm shooting for the end of December.
Okay.
It might be the birth of June.
Commissioner, to build on what the sheriff is saying, this project, these repairs, they have to be completed in phases, and that's why there's not a specific complete-by date.
It's a sequential order thing.
Absolutely.
You can't be one step in front of the other. And so, and then my last question is, will you be coming back to the court asking for additional funds as we get into this next phase?
The man over there that kept, had some money of this lady back here that tells me what I do wrong. We gave them an estimate of what the cost would be.
Okay.
And so, it's in the budget for us to do these repairs that we think it's going to be.
So that was budgeted in the 26th?
Yes, sir.
With some contingency in?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, great. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right, any more questions? And I appreciate a motion to accept.
I'll make the motion to accept.
Got a motion from Gerald, second from Greg, to accept the report from the sheriff. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight-two from me is, it's an information item only. Brian Greathouse, I see you back there in the back. You think you can hide from us, but you can't. Come on up here and introduce yourself. Brian is with LJA Engineering, and you're out of the Beaumont office, you know, because you lost us all over the place. And I'm going to discuss some transition plans with our organization that will change Liberty County's primary contact with LJA, which would be you.
Yes, sir. First, I want to thank you for recognizing first responders. I didn't know that was the day I'd have uncle and a cousin who were both Beaumont area residents.
Yes.
I want to emphasize how much LJA appreciates being able to serve Liberty County. I mean, we really enjoy the people. We love being here, and we want it to continue to progress. Me personally, over the last year, I've really enjoyed serving Liberty County. We faced some challenging projects in precinct four and kind of attacked them head-on, and I hope I can continue to do that for a long time. But when you have some successes and you have people, part of that's success, other people start seeing those people, and so, and they go after those people, you know. And so, kind of in this situation, great opportunity, you know, for the predecessor. I'm just proud of, you know, the opportunity that he's given this situation. It's less of a, I see a transition plan, it's less of a transition than a reinforcement, I think, at this point. We recognize the value and the resources we have out here, so we have brought in even more people recently to help continue to support Liberty County. It starts at the top. He wanted to be here today, Jeff Cannon, wants everybody to know he sees the principal charge of LJA. Call him if you have any issues with me or anybody else, you know, if you know, in that system. On our side, on their reinforcement side, well, you guys have met William Conlon. He came to court, very detailed-oriented individual, and so, you know, he's allocating, you know, much more at this time. We have Anna Chamberlain in fact. She's been heavily involved in the subdivision reviews, you know, over the past year, doing a great job. Recently, we brought over someone who used to work for me in the past. She's a Dr. Zarparation. She's an H&amp;H design specialist. She's been at LGA a couple of weeks now?
Four weeks.
Four weeks? Yeah, it took me about two years to get her here. But she's somebody you're going to see more involved, you know, in communications and that process. So, yeah, we just want to reemphasize, if you have any questions about any type of transition, if you've got anything at all, please call me. I'm readily available, and we'll answer the phone 24/7.
All right. Does everybody have his phone number?
Yeah.
I know, we had so many things going on, I know. You and I became fast friends in the heat of the battle, but I don't know if everyone else has had that opportunity, so.
Yeah, I'll make sure that that's readily available, and I'll tag Jeff Cannon's on there. He tells you all want to yell at me.
Okay.
So that's all I want to tell you.
Okay, so Brian, will you be doing these, like, site inspections, or will you be assigning someone to do that?
Both. So whenever you have this, I'm very hands-on. I'm hands-on to the point where I'm comfortable to be hands-off, and so, to a certain degree. So initially, any deliverable concern, that's all I'm being, and as we get these people more involved and show what services they can provide, then, you know, they may have a little bit more face time, but coming out of the gate, I'm going to make sure there's no transition issues.
So I met Brian last March, right before TexDOT condemned the bridge on County Road 6494. It was 30 days to make a reasonable effort to fix it, and he spearheaded that for us. So it's been a, it's been a good relationship thus far, and so, looking forward to seeing more of him.
Yes, sir, I'm here.
All right. Anybody else got any questions, or? Okay, now, y'all come by and leave your phone numbers for us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. And that is information item only. Take, we need a motion, take no action.
Make a motion, take no action.
Bruce?
Second.
Second, Greg. Further discussion? Here, none call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight-three from Ms. Harris over in the treasurer's office. Consider and approve renewal with Health Equity for Flexible Spending and Dependent Care Administration for 2026. The rate will remain unchanged for 2026 at $5.25 per participant per month, plus a monthly compliance fee of $40.
Yes, sir. So thanks to the court in advance for your time and patience for all this insurance stuff today. Let me first remind everybody that tomorrow and Thursday are the open enrollment meetings at the sheriff's department in the big meeting room that we've been using. So thanks to the sheriff for this meeting room and all the dumb nuts that up here is going to provide right here.
Dumb at home.
Dumb at home, so. And so, this is our administrative agreement that we do every year with Health Equity for the flexible spending and the dependent care, just their administration on it. They charge us $5.25 per participant per month, and then plus a $40 fee on top of that. And just for an example, the most recent bill we have from them is $754. We've got 132 people on the flexible spending, two people on dependent care, two people on both plans. So they charge by participant. So I'm just asking the court to renew at the continued rate, and they're very easy to work with, and I don't think people have trouble with their flexible spending or dependent care too much.
Okay.
So since the rate is the same, it's budgeted?
Make a motion to approve renewal? I'll second it.
Motion from Bruce, second. All right, any further discussion? Here, none call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, Ms. Harris, we're not through yet. We got one more from you. Eight-four, consider and approve renewal of agreement for county year 2026 with Ministar for the under-65 retiree premium billing service. The per-retiree per-month fee will remain at $5.75 for 2026. Pretty self-explanatory.
It is.
Yeah.
No change in the rate there, and they will continue to bill our under-65 folks for us.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce, second from Greg. Any further discussion?
I have one question. Did the county's costs go up that you covered? We kept the retirees' rate the same, but the?
This is, this agenda item is strictly for the billing service.
Oh, okay.
It's nothing to do with the rate, the premium rates?
Okay, so it was going to, it wasn't going to change Mr. McNeedy's, Mr. Needy's?
Yeah, so it's going to be a little later in the agenda, but before it was kind of up several years ago to allow us to use Ministar's service to bill the under-65 folks. We had been doing that in-house, and it was taking one person off the wheel a lot of time to get that going, so.
So you think this is a good deal for the county?
It's well worth it, yes, sir.
Okay, great.
Motion, second. No more further discussion. Call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Ms. Harris.
I voted, too.
Glad you did. That means you believe in it, that's right.
I believe in it.
Item number eight-five for me is consider and approve change order number one for Liberty County Hall Freshwater Supply District One Waterwell Project. This change order is for revisions in the contract to make adjustments in the construction parameters, materials and construction, and methods, therefore resulting in this part in the anticipated savings of approximately $152,000. The change order establishes the new contract total of $835,609.3. All information is attached in the packet. If y'all do remember, this is from ARPA funds that's being funded by.
Yeah, I'm surprised that we have a savings here, but I'm glad to see it.
Yeah, so is there, is there any way that that $152,000 can be reapplied elsewhere in the county?
I think I understood Natalie to say that this savings was for the county, for the city, not us.
Okay.
So there's not an extra $152,000.
It was paid up, we, they was granted a million dollars from ARPA originally.
Right.
So this is a savings of 152 that ARPA's not having.
Possibly, but what Natalie had told me?
Not the city, it's Hall Water.
I understand what you're talking about, but when Natalie and I talked about it, and she's been in meetings with them, she told me, and she could be wrong, that the 150, we believe, is for the city side, because we don't know if they had the funds to do this project. But if it's ours, we'll find out today, and I'll let you know.
There is no city of Hall, though. What I'm saying is it's, it's, this is the water district out over there. It has nothing to do with the city.
Well, whoever was going to come up with the money that they needed to complete the project?
That was Hall Freshwater.
Hall Freshwater? Okay. Well, I will let you know.
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Motion from Bruce.
Second.
And that was second from Greg, I believe. Any further discussion?
I do have that one question.
Okay.
I mean, if those $152,000 from ARPA could be applied somewhere else to the county?
That's a question that we have a certain amount of time to dedicate as well.
Yeah.
I don't know if the girl's going to call this money back or not.
Yeah.
But we had to get it dedicated on how we was going to spend it.
Okay, so those deadlines already, so any savings is just going to be passed on back to the government, not this government, not the local government?
I believe what happens if?
This is our savings on this?
I believe what happens if we truly save this money on our ARPA side, that it gets redistributed to, to projects that are already happening. And so, we had another one that we were going to push this to, that we were going to fund that's already a line item. You can't create new ones.
Motion from Bruce, second from Greg. Any further discussion? Here, none call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Round to eight-six from Nick over in the IT department. Consider and approve adding a copier to the county's master contract for JP6 at a cost of $139. Nick?
Yes, there's a clerical thing on that. This is actually Constable Six.
Okay.
Just got confused with the location since it's the Kaliponian X. Yes, it's for Constable Six. Their, Zerex contract finally is done. We're getting rid of it. Switch them over, they're ready to go.
Make a motion to approve.
With the change to Constable Six?
Yes. With the change from JP to Constable.
Got a motion from Bruce?
I'll second it.
Second, Gerald. Any further discussion? Here, none call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay.
Thank you very much.
That motion carries. Thank you so much. Number eight-seven from Stephanie Berry over in the Liberty County Housing Authority. Consider and approve the reappointment of Letha Ferguson to the Liberty County Housing Authority Board for a new term of two years, beginning November 30th, 2025. Good morning.
Good morning, I'm Karen, guys.
Good, great. Thank you.
So, item number seven, we're here for consideration and approval for Ms. Letha Ferguson to continue to serve on our Liberty County Housing Board. She is not here to attend today. She was called in to work at the hospital, but she did put her willingness out there that she does want to continue to serve, and she is a very valuable member for us, and so I would like to see if we can get that approved today.
Okay. I'm moving, we're through with the reappointment. Motion from Greg. Here, second.
Second.
Second from David. Any further discussion? Here, none call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. And we'll be sure and tell Ms. Ferguson, thank you as well, because sometimes it's hard to find folks that have the time to serve.
Absolutely.
Item number eight-eight from Judge Brown at JP5. Consider and approve installing electricity in the storage building at JP precinct five. The building is used for storing files and office supplies. Judge Brown would like to add electricity to add lighting and proper ventilation for accessibility. proper ventilation for accessibility and preservation of stored materials.
Now, this was just brought to maintenance's attention. I've sent David out to look at it and from then we're gonna go to purchase an agent to see what this is gonna cost. So at this point in time, I'd like to table this.
I had the same thoughts that we don't, we don't know the cost. Don't know if it's budgeted. Where's the money coming from? And so...
Yep.
Okay, got a motion from Bruce. Second to have a second. Got a second from David. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. Call if they would say aye. Likewise, that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Eight, nine from Miss Soliday over in Permits and Inspections. Consider and approve payment request of the amount of seven hundred and thirty-six thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars to LJ Engineering for invoice number two zero two, five, three, eight, six, two, one dated nine, twenty-four, twenty-five.
Now I see why LJ is here today.
Yeah. For engineering services for the GLO's CDVG MIT mod contract number twenty-four, zero, six, five, zero, one, four, E, one, seven, one. Attached in the packet is a copy of the invoice and status memo number seventeen for your review. Melinda, I'm sorry, Jesse, I'm sorry. I'll look up. Okay.
This is what voting came in last commissioner's court, Indian over the drainage and stuff. So everything was there through that. We just need your approval to get the invoice through.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion from Bruce, second from David to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. Call if they would. Likewise, that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight, ten from Permits and Inspections. Consider and approve the request for the county to accept Gemini Section One roads in the two-year maintenance program. The reinspection was performed on October thirteenth, twenty twenty-five with precinct three staff. The developer addressed all of the items of concern on the punch list. Attached is a packet is a letter of recommendation for commencement of the two-year managed period from LJ Engineering. David, do you have anything you want to add to it?
I do not. That's, that's good over there.
One, one thing I want to ask, what kind of roads are these, David?
They're concrete with rebar.
Excellent.
Yeah, like five eights rebar, I believe.
And the only thing there were in the letter from LJ, there was a statement in there that said that in this particular section, the sewer plant had not been in construction or functional yet. So I, I, what, I don't know if that has anything to do with these roads, but you know...
Another day.
That's, that's another time. So they're not selling lots in there yet? Okay.
I don't think so.
All right, all right. Thank you.
Yeah, we're just, yeah, just the road.
Okay, good.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Motion from Bruce, second from Gerald to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. Call if they would. Likewise, that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight, eleven, the permits inspections. This is over in Commissioner Karabowski's territory. Consider and approve Sterling Parkway Street dedication phase two construction plans and final plan. The plans meet the minimum requirements of Liberty County subdivisions and development regulations. Attached in the packet for your view is a letter of approval from Omega Engineers. Bruce, you want to add anything to that?
No, they're tearing a lot of ground up out there.
Yes.
More cops, more taxes coming in. Yeah. They're looking fine.
So I wasn't familiar with Omega, but it looks like the LJ did the third party because they, they were the engineer of record for the plat as well, right?
Yes.
Okay, so that's, that's a good move to remove any potential conflict of interest.
Okay, what say the court?
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Motion from David, second from Gerald to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. Call if they would. Likewise, that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight, twelve also from Permits and Inspections. Consider and approve Sterling Parkway Street dedication phase three construction plans and final plat. The plans meet the minimum requirements of Liberty County subdivisions and development regulations. Attached in the packet for review is a letter of approval from Omega Partners. Jesse, you think? Bruce?
Same old, same old.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Got a motion from David, second from Gerald to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. Call if they would. Likewise, that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Jesse. Number eight, thirteen from over the county attorney's office. Consider and approve renewal of lease agreement between Liberty County and Pickett Joint Properties. The lease on nineteen fifteen Trinity Street, Liberty, Texas. That'd be the law library, would it? Matthew?
Yes.
Okay. I guess we want to keep that because we got all our books there.
Right.
It's the election office.
Yeah. Well, is it considered joint? I mean...
Well, one room is the law library and the rest of the building is the election.
How much are we paying for that?
So previously, we were paying thirteen hundred a month, but the offer from Pickett Joint Properties was to increase the rent to fourteen hundred a month. That is budgeted from my understanding, and we have, the agreement is not in your packet because we have not received it back from Mr. Pickett. However, none of the previous terms have changed other than the rent increase for one, an additional hundred dollars a month. So I would ask that you accept this offer on those conditions and when we, if you approve it today, when we receive that agreement and there are no additional changes, it can be executed by the judge.
Make a motion to approve. Second?
Motion from Bruce, the second from Greg to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. Call if they would. Likewise, that motion carries. Items number fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, and twenty-five will be executive session items. So I'd like to skip over those and go down to item number seventeen on the agenda. From Mr. C over in the purchasing department. Consider and approve amendment to the contract with Tyler Technologies to allow migration to the updated enterprise jury manager software.
Okay, we currently have a contract with Tyler Technologies for our jury system. And let me tell you what I know about it. Limited I know about it. And we have a county and district clerk here in case y'all have questions. But so there's, I don't know if it's new enhancements or just parts that we weren't using that now the district judges and I think the clerks both would like to use, become a part of. So they gave us a quote. Took about two months to get a quote from them, but we finally did. To upgrade it, they want a five-year agreement on the amendment. And first year, the current system, we'd be paying for the next year, three, thirty-three thousand and fifty dollars. And their quote for the enhancements is thirty-seven, eight oh two. So it's only like a four thousand dollars. Over five years, it's like a twenty-six thousand dollar increase over what we're currently paying. So that, that part's not bad. The first year would be thirty-seven, eight oh two. Now, the bad part is to me, is to set it up would be another one-time payment of thirty thousand, ninety-five dollars. That's implementation. That's having to come down, train, all the things that go with that. Also, another part of it is paying the juries using credit cards. Where you hand them the card when they leave instead of, I don't know, y'all do cash or checks now?
We do cash right now.
And I know from being on Harris County jury, they give you like ninety days to use that. I'm not sure what happens to money if you use it, but I guess they...
I'm going to go and say they go back into the jury account.
Yes. So we're, so we're looking at a total of hundred, let me see, two hundred and eight thousand, eight hundred and eighty-one dollars over five years, not counting the seventy-five hundred dollars annual fee for the jury, which goes up five percent every year. So it's not, it's not a whole lot more than we're paying. It should be budgeted, I believe, just in case y'all decided to do it. All the judges want to do it. I'll let the clerk speak because of what they think about it. Have any questions? I know Gerald has questions.
I noticed Tyler continues to come up. We continue upgrading. Is there like a platinum deal we can get?
Exactly. That's exactly our idea.
So, so, Harold, as you know, I mean, some of, sometimes Tyler is like a four-letter word around our office business.
No.
But there, these pages aren't numbered, but there's one, it says the customer agrees to appoint a project leader as a single point of contact with Tyler. A user committee, appoint IT staff, not a single point of contact as a first-line support for the software support issue. So there's, there's, there's some, there's some other things that we agree to besides just paying him X amount of dollars. So you're, you're okay with that, David?
Yeah.
So we currently do right now, pretty much.
I was gonna say, so we're having to pay extra for y'all for this?
No, no, no.
Although y'all already...
No, this, this doesn't have a dollar figure attached. This says a commitment from the user to...
This is, this is standard Tyler stuff. They always want a contact for each program that we do.
Okay.
It, it's probably gonna be the same people it has been in the past, but that's a standard requirement that they have.
Okay. I just didn't know they were trying, if they were gonna try to charge us for something different on this.
No, 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 no. No, they're requiring us to do this so they can implement it correctly. We currently use their jury program. This is adding two special things to it so that we can do the, the large group gathering, I'm sorry, I call it a cattle call, of, of the jurors up front that Judge Kane wants, that y'all approved, what, a couple of months ago? The plan a couple of months ago. It allows Tyler to send out the summonses, the cards, to tell people to show up. It is also...
That we know what to do now.
Yeah, we, we do that ourselves now. So we would be saving money on the cost of our cards. I just spent seventeen hundred dollars on another thousand, so we would be saving money on that end, but Tyler would be paying, I mean, we're paying Tyler to send out the cards and to update the database of the mailing addresses in the county. Presumably, it will give us a more accurate database of people that are available to, to serve on the jury. The, the second part is we're going to stop paying with cash, which right now they're very familiar with. I send them a, a note and they send me back cash and we divvy out, you know, money. We're gonna give everybody a card and then the cards will be loaded with the amount that we're paying them. If they do or do not use it, within a certain time, that money comes back to the county. So those are the two big changes that we're gonna make with the new system. And that's where most of the cost is coming in, in implementing them sending out the summons and, and them monitoring and helping us take care of those cards that we're gonna pay with as opposed to cash. Does that help? I'm sorry, Delia.
Okay.
So Dave, would this help offload some of your commitment to this process right now?
Actually, it's adding more work, but we have gotten some employees for that, extra for that.
Okay. You know, years ago, I haven't had to serve jury duty for a long time. Thank you, Lord. And it, if we didn't accept the money, the, the payment, we could use it and say we donated for a cause, like animals and such. Can you still do that?
Yes. Yes.
Wayne, we got the money for this, right? Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Motion from Bruce, second from David. Any further discussion?
No, I'll just say that the last time I had jury duty, there was Judge Kane over, presiding over that, but it wasn't the one, the Judge Kane we have now.
Right. All right, got a motion, a second. Discussion completed. Call if they would say aye. Likewise, that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight, eighteen, Mr. C over purchasing, consider and approve twenty twenty-six rates for the post sixty-five retiree medical plan and the express script group Medicare Part D program. Rate increase is effective January first, twenty twenty-six. Current contract with Benestar Admin Services ends August thirty-first, twenty twenty-six and allows for negotiated prices. Okay, Gerald?
Okay, so we're in the, I think we're in the last contract of our Benestar. We did it out, I guess, a couple of years ago. Only one to respond to was Benestar, which we've had a couple of years, you know, a lot of years. It's been there. And it's really good program because we've had some really bad ones in the past. The retirees were always ticked off about it. You know, just, it was terrible. But this has been a really good plan. And another, another one we've received quote from was TAC, Texas Association of Counties. And you can see on here what they're, what they're asking for is forty-sixty-nine, sixty-nine per month per retiree. Right now, there's ninety-one on the last billing, I think. So the annual cost of four oh three, seven oh one. Last year was three thirty-two at a cost of three sixty-two, five forty-four. Of course, that's gonna fluctuate depending on how many retirees you have in the plan. And this is only the over sixty-five retirees.
Yep.
And if you look at TAC plan, which seems to be pretty good, package one is pretty close to what we have now. And you see their cost is five ninety-two a month, or six hundred and forty-seven dollars. So, you know, recommendation, I think, for the treasurer will be to stick with Benestar and then, of course, we'll bid it out again next year, see what happens.
On that plan two, that's a lot less than what we already are receiving, correct?
What now?
Plan two from TAC.
Yeah, that, that's a very basic decision, isn't it?
Lots out of pocket for retirees.
I'm surprised at the, the big difference in the two here, but...
I'll, I'll tell you, I just got my notification on my retiree. And it's, it's going way up. Less coverage, more out-of-pocket for prescription drugs. And I do, I thought she said express scripts. That's the group that I'm currently tied to. And at some point, I, I found by asking the folks at Walgreens and using GoodRx, I don't understand that, how GoodRx can provide a lower price than a negotiated price through one of these companies, but it's true. Sometimes, not, not every time, but...
True.
So thi- this is the total plan for the county's retirees in, right?
The over sixty-five.
Over sixty-five. Because over sixty-five and they're still employed, they're not in this program. They're still with the regular county.
Correct.
Program, right?
Right.
Okay. And you say we, we have this budgeted?
Yes. It's like, it's like the...
I mean, we, all these insurance rates, we get the rates from the year.
Yeah.
The budget will be naturally lowered up.
Right, right. They, they give you, I mean, I think we went through this. They give you a good idea of what it's...
Yeah, we're gonna make a estimation.
Yeah, it's gonna be about forty thousand, forty-four thousand more a year.
So the regular insurance went up about five percent. So this, I mean, I haven't done the math here, but...
Well, this went up actually eleven percent, but still, it's only forty dollars a month.
Okay.
Still much cheaper than tax.
Make a motion to stick with Benestar.
There you go. Motion from Bruce, second from Greg, to stick with Benestar. I like that.
Y'all do like that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. Call if they would. Likewise, that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Ms. Harris, you got another one here, eight nineteen. Consider and approve no change to your monthly retiree premium rates for over sixty-five retirees to plan year twenty twenty-six.
So this, this is what the court was...
Mark from...
The court had previously on our employees and under sixty-five retirees elected to have no increase in the premium for twenty twenty-six for those folks. And so we're recommending the same thing for the over sixty-five retirees.
Second. All right. Motion from Greg, second from Bruce. Just stick with what we got. Any further discussion?
Can Kim send a letter to ExxonMobil there? They do the same.
Hearing none, call for vote. Call if they would. Likewise, that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Bad motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Move along to eight twenty from Sheriff Raider, Chief Knox. Discuss, take action on the Liberty County Sheriff's Office entering into an agreement with Genesis E-bonds.
Can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Yes, we looked at this two years ago and there were some concerns, especially with the auditor's office. Two years has passed, we've corrected some things, I believe, on our end. I've assured the auditor that we'll make it right, we, we will, it's, it's going to work. The bail bond board is aware of this and basically it's taken the money, the cashier's checks out of the hands of the COs. Everything's done online. It's at no cost to the county, but hopefully it will help speed up our process there in the jail. Like I said, there's five of our contiguous counties have already gone to it. So it's just a tool to help us and make us more efficient.
So with the bail bond companies that are local, will they participate?
Yes, so they, so, yes, so.
It's not Malua.
No.
It's not Amazon coming in.
No, no, so they already participate in the other counties that they're with, so they're, they're aware of it. And they have a form that they fill out, and we'll get it all together.
I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
Motion from Gerald, second from Greg to approve. Any further discussion? Here you done called for vote. All of them say aye. Likewise, nay. And that motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight twenty-one from Mr. C. Consider and approve recommendation to award ITB number twenty-six oh one road materials and if applicable, execute contracts.
Annual contracts on road materials.
Yep.
So it starts November eighth.
Okay.
Those were approved.
Okay, motion from Greg.
Second.
Second from Bruce. Any further discussion?
Just a clarification, have you awarded it or this is to give you the authority to award it?
This, they're awarding it today.
To, so who they're awarding it to?
Everybody on that list. Do you have a copy of it? I'll give you a copy.
I noticed a lot of these prices are cheaper than last, last year's.
Well, it's, it's funny how they, they, they differ by area, which are in effect precincts. Some are getting better deals than others. And, you know, if, if you looked at the GS one hundred rates, they went up by four bucks a, a ton. But limestone went down five dollars essentially a ton for most, it's, it looked like it offset.
The trucking on that is where the cost comes on it, because it comes from La Porte.
Yeah.
So it's.
But I think, you know, the GS, and, and again, I'm comparing, I'm comparing the price to precinct four, not because it's broken out five different ways here. I guess the traffic in Dayton made those folks coming from La Porte raise their prices. I don't know. So I'll, I'll sit that in front of Representative Holt, so. I, I don't get it. We're the closest to them, and anyway, it's okay.
All right, we got a motion to the second. And a little bit of discussion going on, too. Okay, any further discussion? Here you done called for vote. All of them say aye. Likewise, nay. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight twenty-two from Mr. C. Consider and approve the list of surplus items for the November online auction. Just in time for Christmas here, Harold, what you got?
Yeah, I should have had a list in your package, I think. You have one, Lee? Lots of hospitals and precinct four get rid of stuff that's just sitting out.
Yes, it's, it's a cleanup effort, things that you, you come get wherever you want.
I might come over.
Drag it off.
I guarantee you this two thousand and seven Ford Crown Victoria is going to go for a high dollar. That might make it to the Smithsonian.
Right.
Okay. What say the court?
With approval.
Motion from Greg.
I'll second.
Second from Gerald.
You have anything left over, Gerald?
Yeah, we'll have, we still have some junk left, Bruce.
Okay. Any further discussion? Here you done called for vote. All of them say aye. Likewise, nay. Sad motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight twenty-three from Mr. Poston, Ms. McCarty. Information only, it's an update from the evaluation committee for the construction of the new jail. So Catherine or Matthew, who wants to?
Judge, I'll give a brief update.
Okay.
We have received all of our proposals back from our architects.
Is that the RFQs?
RFQs, yes. We are actually interviewing those architects tomorrow, the committee is. And we intend to have a recommendation to court by the next regular meeting.
Great update.
So we are moving forward.
We are moving forward.
Be sure you let the commissioner of jail centers know that we are moving forward. Okay. All right.
Bobby, don't you have a meeting with them coming up?
Oh, we have a meeting for jail commission. Catherine, Matthew will be there to sit, let them know it is November thirtieth.
All right, this is for information only, so. Well, accept information, accept.
Make a motion to accept information.
Motion from Bruce.
Second.
Second from Greg. Any further discussion? Here you done called for vote. All of them say aye. Likewise, nay. Sad motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight twenty-four from my fire, Fire Marshal Nathan Green. Review and consider the annual contract with Cypress Lakes Fire Department through September twenty-twenty-six. Andy, I think they've gotten everything caught up. Is that what you're thinking?
Yes, we're at the talks with them. They have met the requirements to come into good races to distance themselves from previous problems. That has been rectified and they have requests to come back into good races with a contact to continue serving their territory. Uh, over the past year, they have dispatched the fourteen fires, they responded to ten of the fourteen. Uh, so they have still been making calls in their area. They're just looking to stay afloat.
Yeah. Okay.
At this point, I'm going to move to take no action on this right now. I'm not satisfied by the amount that we're paying. I've got, I got some questions, but yeah, we'll talk about.
The, uh, the budget amount is still, it's in the budget this time. We kept it everything the same as last year. Just letting you know the money's there, but y'all want to take no action and, and look at it a little closer. Motion from Greg. Take no action.
Is there a reason where, where, or how we come up with that sixty thousand?
I believe that's what it was last year, that was the amount that was.
I think last year it was seventy thousand, wasn't it?
Was it seventy?
Well, the papers that you have given me.
They've got such a small area and we're paying a lot of it, probably a lot less than that.
And those were the amounts that were given to me when I got here.
Do what?
Those were the amounts that were provided to me when I was fired off. So that's what I'm working with.
Okay. Commissioner Arthur, I guess we'd like to work with you guys to figure out exactly what, what it is. So I'll second his motion to table it for this thing.
And that is in Greg's precinct. Okay, so we have a motion from Greg, second from Gerald, to take no action. In other words, we're going to come back and look at it later date. To be determined.
We can find out, we can put it back on next time.
Yeah.
So we table in this or take no action?
Take no action.
Take no action, yeah. That just leaves it an open end for the day. Okay, so any further discussion? Here you done called for vote. All of them say aye. Likewise, nay. Sad motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Andy. Uh, number twenty-five, that, of course, I mentioned that was going to be an executive session item. I would like to say that Judge Maradino did contact me and she'd like to remove this or take no action on this item, so we would exclude it from the executive session. And we can take action now, except the way y'all look at it on the legal side. She would like to have some more time to review this with the other judges, make sure everybody's on the same page. So I would ask that you consider take no action on this item and we can exclude it from the executive session.
We take no action.
Second.
Yep, motion from Greg. Second from Bruce. Take no action. Any further discussion? Here you done called for vote. All of them say aye. Likewise, nay.
Go into executive session.
You got a motion to go into executive session from Bruce. Second from David. Uh, all of them say aye. And it is now ten minutes after ten. Okay. All right, we're out of executive session, eleven twenty. Back in the regular session, we had four items that we were going to consider. One item that we had already taken action on, since it did not require to be in executive session after all. It was being withdrawn by the, by Judge Maradino. That was number twenty-five. So the other three items, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen on the regular agenda, those were going to be under.
Harold, five five one oh seven one.
Yeah, five five one oh seven one.
The Calara Land LLC.
Five five one zero seventy-five.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So item number fourteen first. Consider and approve payment in the amount of eleven thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars to Scott A. Durfee for attorney fees for the representation of District Attorney Jennifer L. Burman for services rendered in preparation of a response requested by the State Bar of Texas related to a complaint or grievance. Follow the State Bar of Texas, subject grievance was specifically related to the District Attorney's job duties as the elected District Attorney for Liberty County, Texas. Ultimately, the State Bar of Texas determined that the grievance should be dismissed. And said grievance was dismissed and found to be wholly without merit. Okay, so we were.
Your Honor, I need to abstain on this item.
Okay. Records show that Bruce will abstain when we call for a vote. First things first. Discussion or consider a motion?
I don't know if Matthew wants to repeat any of the things that he, he can legally say. I would ask for a motion to table this to allow my office more time to obtain legal authority or response from the AP's office.
Okay.
I would some move on that, motion.
Sure, maybe it's table?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion to table.
Motion to table.
And then to ask the county attorney to resubmit the attorney general's office for an opinion or other legal evidence.
You have one pending, don't you?
I do.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion to have a second.
I'm just recommendation, I guess I'll second it.
A motion from Greg. Okay. Is there any further discussion? Here you done called for vote. All of them say aye. Likewise, nay. One abstain, that would be Commissioner Karpowski. So the three ayes have it, and we will table this and see if we can get an answer from AG. Item number fifteen, consider and approve amendment to employee handbook clarifying that the county's provision of health insurance coverage for working spouses is prohibited only when the working spouse's employer provides subsidized health insurance to the working spouse. What say the court?
Make a motion to approve amending to employee handbook.
You got a motion to approve or here a second?
I'll second.
Second from Gerald. Any further discussion? Here you done called for vote. All of them say aye. Likewise, nay. That motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Number sixteen. Consider and approve amended agreement regarding subdivision rules and regulations for development between Liberty County and Calara Land LLC for residential development, which would be Liberty Meadows of a one hundred twenty-two point zero four acre tract of land located in Liberty County, Texas. What say the court?
I'm making a motion to table.
Second.
Got a motion from Gerald, second from Bruce to table. Any further discussion? Here you done called for vote. All of them say aye. Likewise, nay.
Bad motion to adjourn.
Got a motion from Bruce, second from David to adjourn. All of them say aye. And it is eleven twenty-five, and we are adjourned.